Not yet. Okay, now she's working. Okay. All right. Ready, Ansel? I'm gonna try actually using the microphone. All right, good evening, everybody. Hello, welcome. Welcome to the the first town of Norwood information session for the May 2025 town meeting, annual town meeting and special town meetings that we're going to be having. I'm Michael Rosen. I'm the Assistant General Manager for the Town of Norwood, and I appreciate you all being here. This is the first night of three nights that we're going to be having this week related to upcoming May 12th town meeting. Just a couple of things. First thing I'll notice is I'm actually using a microphone today. Last year, those of you who were here, I know several new members, but we didn't have microphones in this room. So we wanted to say thank you to the Norwood School Department for helping us out, putting this together with the microphones. And they're also using the owl camera so that people at home can be watching along. Everybody at home should be able to see the slides behind me, as well as a little snapshot of myself talking with the audience. I know it's a little hard to see, but mainly you're here to see the slides and not my face. So a couple of other things, I'm gonna just advance to the next slide, and then you can keep it from there. This is the lineup for this week. We do have tonight's information session is going to cover the basics of municipal finance, led by our very capable Finance Director Jeffrey O'Neil, who's been with us just over a year now. Thank you for doing that today. And then we're going to turn it to the budget overview for all the government, general government town departments. And then we're going to hand it off to the school departments to take over from there and go over their budget. So that's the bad and order for tonight. And as has been practiced at these information sessions in the past, we prefer if you have questions on a specific slide or line item, we'd like to sort of just raise your hand. If you're at home, please either raise your Zoom hand. If that's usually the best way to do it. There's a little hand icon at the bottom there that you can raise. I'll be keeping an eye on the laptop. And then also, obviously, we'll see who's in the room raising their hand. And we'd rather just get to the questions as they come up, rather than wait till the end. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff O'Neil, who is going to take it from there with the slideshow. And then thanks again for being here, everybody.
All right, thank you, Mike. Yeah, should be on. Again, as I mentioned, my name is Jeff O'Neil, Director of Finance and Accountant for the town. Been here just over a year. Prior to that, I was seven years down in town of Vernon, Connecticut.
Can you put it closer to you, Jeff?
Yeah.
Unless you want to use that one.
Yeah, that's fine. So yeah, so prior to Norwood, I was County Attorney in Connecticut, Finance Director and Treasurer for seven years. A number of years in the investment industry before that. And I've also spent 14 years on the town of Menlo where I lived, on the finance community there. So I've had a number of years and then a lot of hours spent developing, analyzing, designing budgets. So hopefully, keep going here, and I'm happy being in Norwood. So today, we're going to start off with the basics of municipal finance, and then we're going into the operating budget. We'll kind of go pretty quickly. I know there are some new town meeting members. So as Mike said, please stop me as we go along if you have any questions or queries or anything to answer as interactive as possible. So first, so what does the budget, what does the budget represent? So the budget that we put together is a clear statement of community priorities, showing how our public funds are allocated. Represents a snapshot of time. Again, it's our best estimate at what things are going to cost in the upcoming year. Those departmental operating budgets, shared municipal expenses. Reflects, as we'll go through, reflects a largely fixed cost structure. You're going to see most of our costs are involved in labor, personnel. And then those changes are made incrementally each year. And then lastly, and again, this is more for the accounting, but it serves as an official financial record. It's used for accounting, compliance, transparency, reporting to the state, reporting for audits, and all the other stuff that comes with financial reporting. So if you look at the budget book, and again, just so the budget books, we do have some up here. They're in the town clerk's office. The budget is also posted online in town meetings and documents, and any finance mission website has the town meeting documents. So this is what you'll see when you start looking through the departments. Town of Norwood does a good job in terms of breaking it up. So if we look here, it's general government. We have our town clerk, who just chose to pick that one because they're so excellent. We have salaries, and then we have our operating expenses. So this is where the detail, the line items are. What we'll go through tonight is more of a summary based. But if you look at the budget book, this is going to be where all the details are and what the expenses are. And we use our requests and then the prior four years. So it's a five-year look on the budget. So we'll go through a couple of definitions and some terminology that's used in municipal finance. So what is a stabilization fund? This is the town's primary reserve account, which is often compared to a savings account. It's intended for emergencies and long-term needs. It plays a key role in supporting the town's credit rating. Right now, we are AA+. That is one notch below AAA. It's very solid financial rating, low risk. The best practice for your stabilization fund, maintain a balance equal to 5% to 10% of general fund expenditures. Looking at the upcoming year, we're at about 7%, $12 million stabilization balance. So we are in good shape there as well. But it's important to keep contributing to that anyway, if we can. Obviously, expenses are going to be. Funds from this account can be appropriated for any lawful purpose by two-thirds voted town meeting. But again, it's not an account you really want to dip into. Mostly, oh, sorry. Mostly, what you want to do in terms of, I say common uses, but it's really, this use is for emergency. We're seeing really only in terms of covering unexpected expenses, major equipment failures, storm damage, addressing revenue shortfalls. We have reductions in state aid, economic downturns, something that we're looking at right now. But again, we don't think we're going to need to dip into this. So I think there's a lot of talk out there. But again, there's no information right now that we have to dip into this fund for any purposes. And then last, it's funding unplanned capital and insurance repairs. Again, we have an aging infrastructure in town, so that could be accepted. That does come into play. Again, don't anticipate that. Another term that's thrown around and it's talked about a lot in this budget is free cash. What is free cash? So that's a surplus of revenue or unspent budget funds. That is certified at the end of the fiscal year by Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Until that's certified, we really don't bring that number publicly. Again, the town of Norwood has been very fortunate over the last couple of years. We've had a large amount of free cash. Last year, it was $29 million. And that sounds like a lot. It is a lot. But it was mainly made up of building permits and investment revenue, which was, again, not much. Because we didn't know where the Federal Reserve is going to be on interest rates. They all seem to be concerned about on that. So the fact that they did not change interest rates, earn 4% on some of our savings, that was a good thing. Again, so free cash in general, it's a one-time revenue source. Should not be used to support the operating budget or for ongoing expenses. That being said, when you strategically free cash, then again, buy time to stabilize the budget. But more importantly, for what we're looking at going forward, minimize community impact. Right up, I'm going. I'm left-handed, so this is a. And that's a minimized community impact and maintaining continuity and service delivery and workforce. Yes.
What happens to free cash if it's not used?
It rolls over the next year.
As free cash?
Correct. So again, we'll use, in order, we knew something, the $29 million was certified. In the fall town meeting, we used some for capital and to adjust some of our reserves. So we used about $9 million. So right now, we're getting about $20 million unused free cash, which will be returned.
Does the interest from that account stays in that account?
In the free cash?
In the.
In the stabilization fund, the interest stays there, yes.
Interest stays there.
Yeah, so that money there is interest stays in that fund. It can't be used for general fund operating.
So free cash moves into general.
So the free cash is basically in our bank account. Yes, that money is investment revenue. That's a line item in our revenue on the budget.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
If you guys keep use of free cash to balance the budget, does that impact our rating?
You might want to repeat the question just for the people at home.
Yeah, so for people at home, the question is if we continue to use free cash for, to fund the operating budget, will that impact our bond rating? So it's, there's a couple of answers to that. The general answer is long-term use, yes. Short-term, no, because we are developing a plan to address our future budget shortfalls. So in this year, yes, we are using large amount of free cash. It makes sense, as I mentioned before. It's minimizing community impact, maintaining continuity of service. Again, we do it next year. We'll have that explanation. But there's planning going forward to figure out what we want to do and how we'll address that going forward. You have other questions on the free cash?
Yes. Does access revenue from like the light department, does that turn into free cash? Is that staying light?
No, so light farming, yes, so we'll get any fan said. But so light farming broadband, that's all Norwood Light, the water sewer. That's an enterprise fund that stays in that fund. So again, we kind of go through a couple of definitions of how to calculate and then threats to free cash. So calculating the free cash, as we kind of just mentioned, surplus revenue. So revenue collections in excess of estimated revenues. And again, the town is always encouraged to budget revenues conservatively. We don't want to say, okay, we're going to make 100, we're going to have $100 million in revenues. If anything changes and they only collect 95, that's some financial trouble. That the bond ratings certainly look at, because they look at your budget result and how you have you offered and operated surplus over the past few years. Budget term acts, again, on the unexpendable appropriations. We'll give an example of that in the next slide. Prior year's free cash, as mentioned, the fund balance from June 30. If we have not appropriated recurring year's budget, that rolls over. That will be certified in next year's free cash as well. And then outstanding property taxes on there. Again, we don't budget for outstanding property taxes. But taxes collected from prior years will increase our revenue. So that's a good source of revenue collected above your estimates. And then on the other side, threats to free cash. Unanticipated expenditures, underestimated benefit liabilities. Again, we'll talk about it in our budget. Health insurance is a big one. Again, we've seen an increase, but if that was something that we didn't budget for, again, we're going to spend more than we've budgeted. That's a threat to free cash. That's going to come right off your bottom line. And revenue shortfalls, same. Like I mentioned before, town consistently budget revenues cautiously helping to mitigate that risk. So just a couple of examples on the free cash. Number one is employee earns $1,000 per week. We've budgeted $52,000. That position is vacant for five weeks. That extra, what we call extras, so that savings of $5,000, that's your underspent expenditures. So that will fall to free cash. On the other side, free cash example number two. We budget $100,000 as our estimated revenue from building permits. If we only collect $95,000, the short amount of $5,000 is deducted from our free cash. So again, we're budgeting conservatively on revenues. Expenditures, we're budgeting for what we think we need to spend. So getting into revenue sources. So the main drivers are our tax levy. So this is your profit taxes. Again, Massachusetts has Prop 2.5, so we're allowed to increase tax levy by 2.5% from the prior year. That includes the new growth. And then in Norwood here, we have the debt exclusion as well from the middle and high school construction projects. And again, on the revenue shot slide, we'll show you how that's calculated, that's shown. Local receipts, another big source of revenue. Motor vehicle excise tax, wheels, room taxes, payments and move taxes, otherwise known as pilots, ambulance revenues, building permits, and various other licenses, fees, and fines. Another big source of funding is state aid. This is funding received from the County Office for Public Education, Chapter 70, general government operations, unrestricted government, general government aid, UGA. Yeah, this year's budget for Chapter 70, we're expecting an increase of $100 million. The government aid as well. And then other sources, as we've already mentioned, free cash. Those certified surplus funds from prior fiscal year introduced, included. Questions on, yes?
The only definite exclusion the town has is the rural high school construction project.
That's correct, yes. Those two. And that will be sliding here, showing where those fall off. Reserve funds, this is something that the Finance Commission has a reserve fund. It's designated fund used strictly for unforeseen emergency expenses that arise during fiscal year. Norwood's budget that amount is $150,000. So again, it's restricted. It's only for unforeseen expenses. Requires Finance Commission approval to access. Other uses would need a town meeting vote. Not for routine needs, it cannot be used for known budget shortfalls or planned supplemental appropriations. So not to pick on any one department, but police came to us and said, hey, we want to spend $50,000 here. Let's use the free reserve. Just not appropriate use. In event town hall had catastrophic failure or something, if we didn't have that money in budget, that would be a use of the pockets. It would be a group use. Again, supports stability, again, maintain budget flexibility for those minor unforeseen expenses. Any questions on the reserve funds? Next, revolving funds. So again, this is a fee or charge collected to cover costs of providing a service. And the revenue is then spent directly from that fund to the service. Most revolving funds will, actually, we do that, so we did not make a change on this fund. So unfortunately, that bullet point is not correct. Most revolving funds do not go to the general fund at the end of the year. They stay within their purpose. The two we have on here, the school cafeteria and recreation programs. Again, it's pretty self-explanatory, but the school cafeteria costs me body lunch. Kids pay into that, that goes into that fund, and that's what we pay our lunch expenses and something, expenditures related to cafeteria workers. On the other side, recreation programs, so users pay a fee for the class. Costs of that is paid out of that same fund. So again, you don't want to make a profit per se, but you do want to have some sort of fund balance available when you're empty. That costs increase, or again, there's another program or service that's going off. Just to point out, during COVID, when everything was shut down, most towns saw their recreation programs go to zero or deficit balance. Based on the fact that there was no revenue coming in, that they're still paying off programs being offered. All right, debt service. This is something that I'm sure everybody loves. This is just repayment of the money that the town borrows, just like the whole mortgage, auto loan, nothing different. We are offering bonds, we are selling to the market. There's a interest rate assigned to that. How is that interest rate accounted for? Basically, what we'll have is, well, we'll work with our financial advisors. We'll try to figure out what's best for the town, when to offer that. They'll look at our financials, standard and course will get us a bond rating. As I mentioned before, AA+, one notch below AAA. So we're in very good quality, very good credit quality. But it does matter, because AAA, between AAA and AA+ you're probably looking at about a 15 basis point difference in cost of that loan. Drop down to AA or A, that then increases to 15 basis points. But it does matter in terms of your overall interest cost that you're going to be paying and forced to pass on to the taxpayers. Again, borrowing restrictions by law, municipalities cannot borrow money to cover operating expenses or to balance the annual budget. It is strictly for capital investments. Debt service, so we have various types of debt service. Number one is within the levy. So this is debt for lawful projects funded within the town's regular operating budget. These payments are subject to the same limitations as other budget items. Outside the levy, debt exclusion. So this is debt approved by both town meeting and voters to be paid outside the limits of 2.5. It's funded through temporary property tax or charge in tight to a specific project. As mentioned before, County of Norwood has two, the high school and the couple of those four projects. Those have been approved outside the levy. So you will see those as different line items in the revenue sources and different line items on our operating expenses. And another debt is associated with water sewer, light broadband. These costs are not paid through taxes, but are instead covered by revenues from customer rates.
So on the exclusion part, usually on exclusions, it's usually a time.
Yes, correct.
So if you go for exclusion, it's usually five years, six years.
There's a time frame above the bar, the length of the bar, yes. Yes, sir.
How much longer is the high school going to be?
I have a slide that's going to show that, but I believe it's 2048. Let's double check when I see this. Oh, I'm sorry, the high school's 35. Sorry, again, that's. So here it is. So debt service of the town's debt overview as of July. The total outstanding debt is 208 million. Sounds like a lot. Obviously, a big portion of that is the middle school project. That also includes debt for enterprise fund, water sewer projects, as well as Norwood Light. So I think on the total for the general fund, it's about 30% of that. 70% is paid for by other, other than taxes per se outside of my debt. So again, inside the levy for the 26 annual debt payments, 4.6 million. Outside the levy, 7.9 million. And here it is. So high school project is final payment 2035. Middle school project is final payment 2040. That's a beautiful building. Just a quick prime on Prop 2.5 overrides. In event there's an override, it's a goal to permanently increase property taxes beyond that annual limit set by proposition somehow, which is 2.5% of the previous prior years limit. Requires approval from both town meeting and voters at the ballot. And that approved, the tax increase becomes a permanent part of the tax base. Question?
If, if between now and 2048, there's a 2.5 override approved, then that surcharge is still on top of the.
Correct, those debt exclusions stay on top. Those are staying on, so those projects are completed, yes.
What's the interest rate on the debt exclusion for the middle school and the high school?
The middle school, I believe, is 3.8%. I'm not sure off the top of my head on the high school. Probably in that 4% range, because a piece of that was refinanced. And again, from a financial standpoint, we continue to monitor the markets and when, if we can, refinance, we'll certainly do that to get a cheaper rate. Let's keep the same tenure on the borrower. Tax rate, so understanding property taxes. Property tax rate is determined by two key factors. The total tax levy. Again, this is the amount the town needs to raise the taxes to fund the budget for the year. It includes all those sources of revenue, we talked about some taxes, state aid, fees, fines, and any reserves that we might use. Tax base is just the total value of all taxable property. And it sits in here while residents often focus on the tax rate. More accurate measured impact is the average tax bill. In Norwood, the residential rate is 75%. So it's residential properties pay 75% of the requested tax levy for the year. Commercial and industrial are 25%. And looking at the average tax bill, we put a chart together, just some surrounding towns. You know, the grand scheme of things, nobody wants to pay taxes, nobody wants to pay more taxes. But Norwood does offer a pretty good value in terms of what we have to pay versus other towns around us. So again, for 2025, 5,854 single-family parcels, average family, average single-family home, $673,000. Weeks to just over $7,000 in taxes.
Going back to the last slide, when you refer to commercial, residential, and industrial, when you have multifamily houses that are being taxed to property tax, is that multifamily property, like the apartment, the Avalon apartment, does that go under the 25% or is that populated under the 75%?
I believe that's all residential, so commercial, industrial, more of the companies in town.
Who's mixed use of that?
It's a great question. You know, I'm mixed use, I was mixed use in town. It's the same.
Him here?
No.
No?
We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out. That's a great question. Google.
We all check to be a tester and then put some on our site.
I don't have this number at work.
So again, just to kind of close this section out, the utility and enterprise funds. Again, Norwood manages three self-supporting funds for essential services. Electric broadband following the Norwood Light. Water and sewers operated as a combined enterprise fund. So again, restrictive use. The funds here can only be used for expenses directly related to those respective services. No tax support. General fund tax dollars cannot be used to cover utility or enterprise fund expenses. And then we have a chargeback for shared services. So you'll see this on our revenue. We have a revenue line called indirect charges. That is a system of cost allocations that ensures each fund pays its fair share for services like billing, finance, and insurance, support by the town. So annually, we'll look at those accounts. We'll figure out, my staff, the county team, how much of our work is being done for Norwood Light, broadband, how much is being done for water sewer. We'll assign a percentage of that. And that is charged in their line budget. You'll see indirect costs to the general fund, to the water sewer fund. You'll see that in order to show what we're estimating the charges should be. Is there a question?
Yeah, I thought the municipal light department legally was allowed to make up to an 8% profit.
I know there's a legal limit, I'm not 100% on the light department in terms of what their regulations are. I don't think anybody's here to like money, but they are allowed. I believe it's in that range. 75%, 7.5% to 8%.
Because I thought Norwood sometimes would use a million dollars or something. It would be a transfer income from the light department.
You do have that on our budget as a revenue source, yes.
So then they must be allowed to make a profit.
Yeah, I guess they are allowed to make a profit. I'm just not sure exactly what that percentage is.
So, so it's not really true that the finance community uses for expenses directly related to respective services, if you know, a lot of stuff for somebody a profit to general lottery.
Well, again, some of that is based on how it would pay with taxes as well.
Okay.
So there's a couple of different ways to push that forward without explaining that it's a profit share or whatever people say. So any other questions on municipal finance terminology, words that you may have heard, still don't understand, or want a perfect clarification on? Yes.
Definition for enterprise fund? What is that?
So an enterprise fund is basically something that is set up for specific use, like the water and sewers, an enterprise fund. So all the revenues are going to be in there, the user charges, everything is funded into that fund. All expenses are captured within that fund as well. So it's very similar to the light and broadbands, but we just classify the water sewer as an enterprise fund for the housing purposes. So if there's no other questions, we good, Mike?
Yep, good over here.
Okay. So now we'll get into the general government budget overview. Again, I'm sure everybody can see this. Perfect. I can't see it. I'm trying to, I did put it together, so I do know what it is. So again, projected revenues, it's going to be there. It's going to be the first, yeah, this is in the book as well. So everything we call from here to the rest of your presentation is also in the book. Property tax revenues is going to be the first half, I'm sorry. Projected revenues will be the first half, top half of the sheet. So again, we have our property tax.
Page 11.
Page 11 of your budget book, if you have that. Can we add online?
It's worth mentioning that it's available online.
Yeah, it is available online, again, town meeting notices and documents, and also the Finance Commission, the town meeting documents. Give you one more minute, we kind of get to the page. Okay, so as I mentioned, so the first top half of this is going to be our total revenue and how we calculate what's available for us to spend in the upcoming year. So the first part of this is your property tax revenue. It's our prior year levy limit plus 2.5% plus new growth. The town of Norwood uses a $900,000 number for new growth. If you look at the previous four years, it's a little bit higher, but the $900,000 is a good conservative estimate, and we recommend a change in that. Below that, we have our property tax level, we've got some of the property tax level. Then we have our two debt exclusions, in the high school excluded debt, the open excluded debt. So this is revenue we bring in. Brings our total tax levy to 111 million, that was 491,000. Within our non-properity tax revenues, as we talked about before, state aid, otherwise known as the cherry sheet, only because it used to be presented on cherry red paper. So that's cherry sheet. It's historic fact that it's electronic, not really simple paper, it's something. So again, we're at 25 million, yeah, 25 million this year. Our local receipts, again, as we went through, ambulance fees, investment revenue, licenses, fines, 15 million. Here's where we have our utility pilots, as mentioned previously. We have a couple of pilots out there, but the utility, the Norwood Light is the big one. So that's roughly 7.1 million. Sale of cemetery lots is another annual allocation of $125,000. So that is coming from a cemetery fund. When you're buying lots, there's money that goes into this fund. We take out 125,000, basically offsets the cost of the cemetery maintenance. And then other miscellaneous non-occurring. Again, you can see here, it's a big number, 9 million. This is where the indirect charges come in. For this year, obviously, we're using $7,450,000 of free cash. So that's included in that 9.3 million. So that gives our total revenue available, making 168,691. So that's what we know. Before, I should step back, before we used the free cash, 161 million is where we knew our revenue was going to be. So that's what we kind of looked at. Okay, now we. So that's what we kind of looked at, okay, now we build our budget, here to be stated. And we'll get into most of these going forward, uh, but the bottom half of that sheet is all of our expenses. The general government budget, 43 million, schools, 65, facilities, 9, and shared services, roughly 47 million. So we knew when looking at all of our expenses after we put, again, just kind of step back, the budget is not just done in a very short fashion. Budget planning, again, we're starting planning for next year now, but in normal circumstances, we're looking at an October timeframe. We'll get together with the departments, we go through, see what their asks are, what they need. We then sit with the general manager office, go through, we have the budget balance and commission, we have the order selecting, finance mission, a number of public reviews that we go through to determine what the actual budget is gonna be and what the total is gonna be in this budget book. So again, it's not something that's created in a very short term, it's a long, lengthy process with a lot of communication and a lot of input from various counties. So we came up, 168 million is what we need to fund. And that is where we'll go into the budget. Are there any questions on the revenues or expenses that we can report?
Is the breakdown of the shared expenses about the same between the school and general government as it is without the shared expenses?
Uh, shared expense is a little bit different, um, when we start looking through some of the stuff, we'll, we'll see, but the biggest one that's gonna stick out, obviously, we have regional schools in there, then we have the, um, health insurance, which would be a big portion of the schools and town, and then retirement is mostly town, so it's kind of a mixed bag there. But it is, it's a representative of both entities between schools and town. So for fiscal year '26, operating budget, the key cost drivers, salaries, largest expense, $403 million. 77% of this, or 25, is made up of departments including police, fire, D W, engineering, library, recreation, snow and ice operations. Again, that's consistent among other towns as well, that those, those are the, the largest entities within the town government, those are the largest salaries. You'll find that in just about every other town you look at as well. Uh, in terms of top non-salary costs, what are we looking at? We're looking at trash collection of $3 million, IT systems and services of $1 million, snow removal, 848,000. So the snow removal is, is interesting because it's the only finite on account that we can overspend for Massachusetts Department revenue. So again, you can't reduce your budget, so we'll keep it flat here over the year. But even events, we had a bad winter, and we need to spend $1,500,000, we can't be that. Comes out of your free cash at the end, or additional appropriation, that's the only line that we can, so that's, that's important to note when you start looking at some of these expenses. That's why we budget to, okay, this is what we think we're going to spend. Um, operating capital makes up less than 1% of the total budget, again, we do have a follow town meeting where we allocate other capital projects through the use of free cash and or borrowing if that's so applicable. Um, just as a note, we made $178,000 reduction in road construction funding to meet our overall funding up to targets that we keep out of the budget balance.
Actually, me, um, can I ask a question or answer a question? So the answer about the commercial properties was, it depends on what percentage of the building is commercial or residential. If it's 50/50 commercial versus residential, it's taxed 50% at the commercial rate and 50% at the residential rate. So it's based on that split what the, the rate is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So another big aspect of, of the, the budget, the threshold obligations. So cost of living adjustments, otherwise known as COLA, typically range from 2% to 2.5%. Step increases, so again, if we hire a, a new employee at a bottom step base level, step one, they're entitled to on their annual anniversary, sorry, blank there. They're all entitled to do that step two, so again, that's in generally the 2.75% and 3.25% per step for most of the units and non-union employees. Public safety features a wider range, wider range of increases, but at fewer steps overall. Additional salary growth, longevity payments, and educational incentives that further need his compensation. So if we look at our snapshot of our operating budget summary, again, salaries, 33 million, change is 1.9, up 6%. That ties into your COLA plus your steps, again, you have a number of employees that are entitled to that, so just in generally, you're looking at 5% right there. So obviously, we have some educational incentives, some other contracts that have been sold, 6% on our salaries. Our operating budget, modest increase, 419,000, still 4.58%, but it's, we'll show you what the makeup is in a second. Capital, 388,000, again, we took out the money for the roads, so we're down 32%, looks great. But not the greatest story there. So general fund totals, 43 million, 187,399, up 2.1 million, or up 5.18%. So we can go through these fairly quickly, um, if anybody wants to stop, you know, that means, again, I think the general themes are, you're gonna see salary increase with flex COLA, there won't be a lot of change in operating expenses. And then we have a chart showing employees, I believe, overall, we're up one employee. Overall, we have two in facilities, losing one in recreation, and half of that in senior center, right?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to, to a few minutes here. So selecting, uh, $83,000 salaries, again, I think it's Amanda, she, she does not get paid for that job, that's assisting in the office for the day-to-day work, this board selecting is a volunteer position. Um, operating expenses at the same, again, full-time employees, we have one in that office. General managers, again, salary in flex COLA, step change, no changes made to operating expenses here. And again, general manager personnel summary, seven and a half employees remaining at seven and a half. Again, all of this is in book, it's in the back pages, section four, all the sporting schedules are back there. Finance mission, again, salaries, that's for our stenographer, operating expenses are up a little bit. The main driver of that is just our annual audit fee, that is about $100,000. Not something we do wanna pay, it's something we have to pay, we have to audit. Finance accounting, again, all the step change, longevity, uh, we did decrease operating expenses just to, uh, reflect departmental needs, not a huge amount, but some of the papers, some of the other stuff we're looking at, we don't do that as much anymore, so we're able to increase that. Assessors, same thing, there's a nominal increase in legal expenses, and then full-time equivalents, three people, still three people in that office, haven't changed. Same here, salary change reflects contraction of the steps, COLA, we do have a, what looks like a sizable increase in operating expenses. Again, the treasurer's office does a lot of the mailing, does a lot of postage, and then they pay for our ambulance billing services. So there's a percentage of all the revenue we bring in from the ambulance, we have to pay out. Can't be a net revenue collection, it has to be an expense being shown out, we have to show it, it pains the rest, so that is in that line. The line is probably still underfunded per se, but we'll get there. Um, but again, it looks like a big increase, but that is, that is offset by the increases in revenue. Same thing, no change in personnel. Also, no changes, same.
Question, we have an anonymous person that raised their hand, if they have a question. Okay, yeah, go, go ahead, uh, if you'd like to speak.
Sorry, my name is Sid. Hey, it's Ed Ferris, District 8. I was curious if any did a projection on the operating costs for the ambulance service without the hospital.
Are you asking if there's been a, an analysis of the cost of the hospital being downed?
Yes, because with it down, our operating costs have gone up, I was wondering if anybody did a projection of how that's gonna expand over time.
I mean, I think that there's the, we obviously have the hospital and task force that's, that's looking at items like that, this is more for the upcoming budget. So that was not factored into the upcoming budget, but there are certainly discussions going on regarding the, the implications of what happened there.
Right, okay, so, okay, so, nobody's done an analysis going forward.
There is work being done behind the scenes, yes, but there is no analysis presented in the, in the actual annual budget documents.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
So moving on to human resources, same thing, salary changes, uh, operating expenses reflect an increase in employment testing and supplies for recruiting and job fairs. Uh, same here, we, we did approve a additional employee, a generalist position back in May, we added that in the early fall, that was the four to five from 24 to 25, maintains that 26 to five employees. IT, information technology, and salary changes, software programs, as everybody, I'm sure, you're aware, these things are not cheap, they continue to escalate. So we do have an increase in that budget and our capital expenses for our annual equipment refreshes. And no change in personnel. Town clerk, elections and registrations, again, same salary changes, contract, COLA, longevity, um, elections and registrations, we have one election move forward, three last year, that'll reduce those expenses. Same, four employees, still have four employees. Year development, again, I feel like I keep repeating myself, but it's the same in, in every department. Salary changes of COLA, obligated steps, no change in operating expenses, we have the $10,000 put back in there for the conservation and acquisition. Change in personnel. Annual town report, again, we'd have to do a small increase to reflect printing costs, like everything else, printing is going up, so, small increase there, 75 bucks. General government, we had no changes here, an easy one. Police department contractual mandated increases drive salary growth, operating expenses increased by an average of 2.5% reflecting increasing costs to run the park, so again, 10.5 million, so the total budget here is 11.1 million. Police department personnel summary, same, 70, 74 FY '26. Fire department, yes, can we go back to the police number?
Yeah, we didn't have any change in staff. You're saying $800,000 in salary increases? There's a new contract, I guess, sort of a bunch of educational incentives in steps. That just seems like a large number for step increases.
Does that, does that reflect the prior year as well? Or was there a retro and then, so it wasn't captured last year? Do we know?
Yeah, the, the retro being paid out, or, um, what we're doing now, I guess, wouldn't have been captured in that 25 number. So the superiors were without a contract that they were waiting.
Last year's budget might not have reflected the full cost of the, uh, upcoming contracts.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Okay, so any of the salaries cross over different slides? So for one of them, the salaries was $15,000, is that one person separate from all the other clients, or is that somebody who has a position with another salary also getting?
No, that $15,000 was related to one position, yes. Fire department, again, new contract, salary growth, operating expenses, again, reflecting recent costs, particularly medical supplies, but again, that we've talked about that, the hospital being down, medical expenses, we're using more on some of those lines that they adjusted as such.
Do you hear, are any of your selling those supplies, or?
We don't sell the supplies, those are the supplies they use to keep people healthy, and, and, right?
Yeah.
So that's the, we have to pay for those.
I see it was built into the cost of.
Some of the, some of that's built into the cost that we bill the, the patients, yes. Yeah, so there's, there's obviously, there's a, a number, a set number, correctly from our sheet, there's a set number that we roll for each run. And it should include the cost of labor, cost of supplies, doesn't fully cover the cost, but it's an offset. Yes.
A question. On the line, I, we have firefighters, paramedics, EMTs. Um, how come the employees are going down, yet they're doing more runs? Within view of hired more, yeah, when you hired more people for that item because they're out of town more than they are in town, it, it seems like you're shortfall in the fire department and they're gonna have burnout. No unintended part of you.
So our staffing number of, of 60 has been, has been constant. Those numbers there are the firefighters, but then we also have lieutenants and captains on each shift that make up the 15 per, per group, so we haven't lost anybody, but we haven't gained anybody either.
So the difference is chief here is, you had captains and lieutenants at offset, so captains went from four to five, lieutenants went from five to nine, so there's four add there, 52 and 48 is the four add.
We, we also, we also lost the dispatchers when we went to, uh, A-Track, so we lost four people there.
Can I ask you a follow-up question?
Sure.
Do we actually have enough paramedics and EMTs to get us through till we can get a hospital up and running? Because that hospital is not gonna up and run overnight, and it's not gonna, probably won't be in the next two or three years, so do we have enough to, to cover all these runs? Because we do have an aging population in Norwood.
So our, our call volume continues to increase, uh, at, at a high rate. Um, we're managing the calls that we have now, but we're relying heavily on mutual aid to do that. Uh, we've had 198 mutual aids into the town since the first of the year, so, and then predominantly that is at the ambulance, mutual aid ambulance is coming in, so we could use more staffing to, to staff the third ambulance, but, um, that's not currently in the cause.
And I think in Mr. Zuko's open letter, it does state in there, obviously, if, if we had unlimited funding, there'd be additional apps in the fire department, but we don't have a, a limited funding, so it was something that we couldn't fit into this budget.
Okay, I get it, but I'm not, not beautiful here, but the, the fire department is our safety net for this town, whether it's, it's a burning building or a medical emergency. Yet we added more on, under, uh, HR, there was more added, another generalist was added under HR, which I find kind of odd. I'd rather add to this department than to a department of HR, because it seems like HR is growing and it's it, it's just, I don't know, I, I just think we have it backwards. Not, not to be disrespectful in any way, shape, or form.
But I think the chief would agree, going forward, again, we're gonna look at it going forward, because we're identifying that, yes, we do believe there's a need for additional firefighter paramedics. I think it's, you can't just add one, it's, you know, you gotta have a couple of them to, to do it, but we need to find.
No, I get it, I'm just.
So it'll certainly be asked for, when we start looking at next year's budget, I, I can guarantee that the increase in that line is gonna be there, at least initially, then we see where we go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can I just make one, one comment? Um, the fire department actually, over the past year, oh, sorry, I'm Lisa, I'm the HR director. Um, I just wanted to make one comment, and that is that over the past year, um, the fire department has made a change in how they're recruiting. Um, so it used to be civil service, we would get all of our lists from civil service, now we're doing a lot more working with the department to recruit for the firefighters, paramedics, from all of that too, so the, the new recruiting position is certainly hoping, without a major chief, to probably, would hopefully agree with that.
Thank you.
It's hoping to get quality candidates, but the number still doesn't change, the, the 60 that we have on the line. But we are getting quality candidates that are coming in that are, in this case, we have two that'll be onboarding in, in two weeks that are already trained uh, both on the fireside and have experience as medics, so we'll be able to put them out on the street almost immediately, so that is a positive. Uh, they had to fill a retirement and a resignation that we had a couple of months ago, so, um, they're, they're not new positions per se, they're just to fill positions that we currently have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving on, building department, same thing, salary changes, uh, very small operating increase expense reflects required safety gear and training for the state's new cold cycle. Same here, no change in personnel, five, last year, five this year. First management, no change there. Traffic control, fire alarm, street lighting, uh, we own the streetlights, we have to pay for the electricity, that's the street lighting. Traffic control, fire alarm is the repair of those, uh, assets, again, we've adjusted that to reflect the spending trends, again, everything's getting more expensive. assets, again, we've adjusted that to reflect the spending trends, again, everything's getting more expensive.
Yeah, is there anything to update the traffic, like, close on time? See, I'll update it as it comes.
General manager, that's.
Mark, Mark Ryan is here.
Mark, yeah. Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, coming to you, it's a question, the signals in the center? Yeah, yeah, we went out to bid, we have a contract with OVO Electric, and they will be starting work probably the end of May, start placing signals at nine intersection.
Thank you. Moving along, public works, engineering, again, salary changes here, not much change in the operating expenses. Highway maintenance, as we mentioned before, uh, we reduced the capital amount, operating amount is the same. Snow and ice, that's what I was talking, we maintain that, we cannot reduce that, so we will maintain that at one day seventeen, two hundred. So we lowered the balance for the roads, is that, we're gonna expect worse roads in the next year or two? Um, no, there's, there's other sources of funding, but I would prefer again to Mr. Ryan to, to talk about the road plans.
Yeah, we, we got a lot of money, uh, two point eight million dollars in capital, uh, capital outlay in, in fall. So that with, uh, the operating highway maintenance. The contract out there was awarded and thirty-five streets can be done, so it's quite a bit of work is still gonna be ongoing. So we've made great progress the last five years, getting in pretty good shape.
Yeah, but that wasn't just arbitrary cut, we, we did talk to the department to make sure, okay, can you live with this cut if it, it has to happen? Yes.
This snow and ice salaries, are those contracts with companies that provides snow ice removal or is those people?
That's internal, so salaries are internal to Norwood employees, it's overtime based, it's what that is.
So there's one person in Norwood whose job is snow ice removal?
No, there's a number, there's a whole number, just about everybody in TPW, right?
The whole season, yeah.
So is that like a portion of their salary?
You know, overtime costs. So, so during the storm, during the event that they're working for, we charge overtime on, and that's what gets charged there.
And so overtime's considered a salary? It's not overtime.
Classified here, but if you look at the budget book, it's gonna say overtime.
Okay, thank you.
Waste collection of landfill, again, non-maligned, reflects increasing costs. Case removal, again, a, a significant driver of the overall operating costs, between your three and a five-year contract, where we're being charged more, we're throwing out more, it's just a, a cost that we have to pay, it goes up. It's the combination of a lot of the work from home and a lot of people wearing stuff, there's just a lot more trash that goes out. Cemetery parks maintenance, again, salary changes in cemetery, uh, operating reflects increasing costs of materials, groundskeeping, cost of materials for parks maintenance, basically the same. Non-increase is, but, yes, sir.
How much is spent on private contractors for, uh, maintenance in the parks and stuff?
Do you have a no market?
I mean, seventy, eighty thousand. Years ago, when we took over all the fields, athletic fields from the school department, uh, the decision was made, rather than hire employees full-time, we would hire contractors to help us cut some of the fields.
Is that true for the town hall? I know this private contractor is doing that now, seeing as, uh, this private contractors.
Yeah, facilities had, uh, we may became the facility department. Spent a lot more time maintaining the buildings, they had to hire subcontractors, a couple of grass around the facilities.
Yeah, so, so that is a line item in this facilities budget, you see contracted services, it will be open book in the facilities. So that's different from the parks maintenance that Mr. Ryan was talking about. Personnel summary, we'll do that fast, but again, no change in personnel. Airport, again, salary changes, no changes to the operating budget, uh, two employees down there. Health department, again, we, we do have a, a change in the salaries, so salary change reflect the steps cola. And then we also have ending of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, so that impacts full-time salaries, I believe, with two employees that are now fully budgeted, coming prior year. So they're always employees, they're not new, their salary is paid for by the American Rescue Plan, now it's paid for. As, as I just mentioned, eight employees last year, eight this year, just two of those have to be picked up in the operating budget, salaries. A portion of it, it's not the that one, it's, it wasn't the full full cost of those two employees.
No, it was a portion of it, it was, um, you were basically saving some money somewhere else, so we were just using the ARPA funding for that, and I think some CARES Act money also.
Again, that, that.
So it's not a grant per se, it's not a grant of funding that gets.
Question, do you still have the nurse from, uh, St. Catherine's on here, or is that, because I remember there was a discussion at a town meeting last time or the time before?
No, but we, we ended up doing a one-time fund for them, uh, to give them notice that the funding was going to win. It was done off budget last year. So the answer is no, that's not in the budget for this year. Also, me and James Senior Center, same here, ending market funding, so there's, uh, a pickup of salaries. Again, slight decrease in operating expenses to, to reflect the historic trends. So you see here, full-time equivalent is to have employees, so it's, they're going to, yes.
Just a point of clarification, what the ARPA funds really because of COVID?
The, the American Rescue Plan Act, yes, yes, the impact of COVID.
And well, and that pandemic has substantially gone away. So why do we keep the extra help of COVID pandemic is not clear at the moment.
I don't think the answer, I don't think it was extra help, I think it was just that we were able to use those funds to offset the cost of some employees. So again, as I mentioned, we did not change, we did not increase any employees, we were just able to change the source of the funding.
I see, okay.
I could go on for, I could go on for fifteen minutes about ARPA. Troubles it's created for municipalities, you know, where we're gonna come down to, the chief is gonna mention, you're gonna need a ladder truck at some point. Five years ago, that was a million five, we're looking at three million dollars from now. ARPA was so restricted in terms of what you can use the funds for, it's created massive inflation. Water projects, road projects, everything, it's crazy. It was, it was great at the time, but it's long-lasting effects that we're all gonna have to pay going forward. Veteran services, again, salary decrease, we, we have a, a staff turnover, a new leader in that department. Operating expenses of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, hundred and thirty thousand of that is for veterans benefits. So those benefits, we get reimbursed at seventy-five percent in the following year. So it looks like a big number, it's a hundred and thirty thousand, obviously to help deserving veterans. We do get reimbursed from the state, seventy-five percent of that whenever we spend during the year.
All right, I'm so if I were to total up the total number of employees on each of these slides, that would be the total number of employees within the entire Norwood government? Or would there be crossover between some of these, where somebody would be on the veteran services and their salary would be accounted for there? As well as, say, just on the fire department, talking about them, and their salary would be represented there as well?
No, so if you look in the budget book in the, in section four, there is a grid of total town employees. So each one of these is then, it's just a one-page, and you think at all employees by department. There's no best crossover between the two, two departments. Library, again, steps cola, um, library sitting down, they were able to reduce some of the expenses to, to show the, uh, historic trends. So the ask is not, the increase is not as much as we would normally see, look at some of those line items, it's okay. That's not meaning that we can reduce that, latency here, if there was any question on the library. Uh, but again, capital line, they was able to reduce that to the managed cost, six thousand, we're gonna use that. Same personnel summary. Twenty employees, twenty ask for, and fiscal twenty-six. Recreation, we do have a salary decrease here to, to staff turnover. Um, we also have one less employee, I'll show you in a second, um, operating expenses are expected to increase for hall's pool online. Again, some of that will be offset by increased revenue from the budget. Not a huge amount, but again, it could be a little bit counseling in the revenue. And again, here's, as I mentioned, we had five last year, we are, we've removed the assistant superintendent and we've gotten out four employees. Celebrations, no changes there, again, this pays for Fourth of July concerts, uh, that holiday decorations. Some of it's offset by donations as well, right, Mike?
Yes, that's right.
So this is not, it doesn't, this is not what it costs to run all those events, it costs a lot more than that. This is what the town is appropriating.
We appreciate all the donors that give, yes.
Uh, so as I mentioned before, so here's just a brief summary of our operating expense analysis. As you can see, the, the line items we hear, we've caught, we've highlighted are more or less contractual. Treasure expenses posted to ambulance, ambulance fee collections, like I mentioned. Uh, IT, software licenses, this is our enterprise system that we use for all our books, records and accounting. Um, it's a very robust system, but they also have the news, uh, massive municipalities, and it's very difficult to change from that system, so they're, they're gonna increase an average, create five to ten, mostly five percent on an annual basis. Fire expenses, as I mentioned before, medical supplies, um, waste removal, again, contractual, that's the big one, hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Recreation expenses, as I mentioned, second pool, again, partially offset that pool fees collected. So just on those line items alone, it's eighty-seven percent of our operating expense. So I mean, there's really not a lot there that we're trying to, to increase on the overall operating lines. Same thing here for capital, again, just reiterate, it's what we said already, we took out the hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from capital, so it looks like we're down thirty-two percent. Never agreed to take out your capital, because then you have to look to fund it elsewhere in the fall, through free cash or something else, but we did what we had to do to make the budget, uh, the number that we needed to. All right, we'll get into shared fixed costs. So these are all the, the big line items that, that kind of don't fit into an operating expense category, it's debt service, insurance, retirement, all of them. You'll see here, good news here, debt service, we did not, we did not issue any debt last year. We do not have any plans in next year's budget at the current time, we'll see what happens during, um, capital in the fall. Senior exam, that would be for twenty-seven, so we're probably not gonna issue any, general operating fund debt in twenty-six. So we're down three hundred and thirty-one thousand there. Yes, sir.
Tom McClintock, so what would it take to know where to become a triple-A tenant, because fifteen basis points is huge against the majority of that.
Yeah, and so I'm gonna try to change just the answer that I don't really wanna give, because I think the upside of, of getting a triple-A is the fifteen basis points, but there's ways, in, in my opinion, there's ways to mitigate that. We can offer bonds when other municipalities aren't, or when some, when money becomes available in that market. And I did this in Burnham, we were saying they were double A plus, we got a triple-A rate, because we timed the market, working with our financial advisors. They knew when people were putting money to use in the market, and they knew that there wasn't a lot of other supply come. So to answer your question, to get to triple-A, again, we have to manage a little bit better going forward in terms of use free cash. We've had, um, operating budget surpluses, so all of that's pretty good. The real deciding factor is the, the economics of the town, and I don't really think we can get to triple-A based on that. If you look at, maybe, there's a number of municipalities in Massachusetts that are triple-A, a lot of them are wealthier towns, and I just think that, that pulls us back a little. But I can confidently say that if we are issuing bonds, we're gonna work with that, because we don't really have a date that we need to issue those. It's for projects that we know are going forward, so we can work with the financial institutions, we can try to figure out, okay, what's the best time to take advantage of the market? Okay. Again, school, regional schools, no faculty, blue bills, these are, um, costs that come based on the number of students that we are sending there. Again, we did see a decrease in blue bills, so that's another line item that's going down. Retired pension contributions, this is a, a big increase. Again, so general government employees and non-certified school staff, staff and members of the Norwood retirements. We are given a actuarial recommended, recommended actuarial contribution every year from PARAC, the state retirement board. Basically, that's what we have to budget for, so that's what this number is, is. So our pension fund is about seventy-six percent funded, we have to be fully funded by two thousand and thirty-nine, is what we're just going to improve for base salary funding schedule. So years, subsequent years, it's gonna be up four percent. Till they come back and tell us. Obviously, the market's moved a little bit over the past few weeks and months, we don't know where that's gonna be in the next report, in the next annual report, so that number may be increasing faster than you expected before as well, so it's just something to watch.
Is that? Is that giving a rating of red light, yellow light, green light, the pension fund, as many pension funds are given depending on what percentage they're funded?
Not that I'm aware of, but, but I don't think so, we, we kind of fall in the middle right now of where we are in terms of Massachusetts and all the pension funds. But there is no, uh, rating that I'm aware of. Workers' comp, again, all non-public safety employees are covered on the town's general, fully insurance plan, public safety employees are, are separate insurance coverage. Again, just based on trend, this is what we think they need paid in terms of the overall costing, nice. Health insurance, but again, this is one that, uh, you know, if there's anything that keeps us up at night in terms of town, it's, it's the, the health insurance. When we first started doing the budget, we were expecting anywhere from eight to nine percent, which was consistent with last year. Um, GIC, who we are members of, and we have the majority of the state, they published a document that said it would be ten and a half percent. They then sent us the rates, it was thirteen percent. Um, if you're gonna see the recent headlines, it's, it's running out of money to pay claims, I think, and that. So they're not funding, well, they're gonna ask for additional appropriation from the governor to pay, uh, the claims in June. So that one is, uh, obviously two million dollars, and we hope that next year is not the, the same increase, but again, based on the cost of healthcare, as anybody as well, we're not going down on them soon, so. And I think that Mr. Mizuko's mentioned before, it's based on our, we'll continue to look at it, we'll work in, we have an consultant, but we'll work with somebody to take a look at. If our loss ratio improves, can we go elsewhere? There's not a lot of other options out there, but it's something we'll monitor. Again, we threw this in here just to show other towns. Instead, I, I was on the finance committee in Medway, so I'd like to take credit for that. I've got a self-insured, again, before that, they had significant large claims, those large claims had, had turned it off for one reason or another. So it was the right time for them to, to self-insure. Uh, but again, it's, it's something that we'll, we'll all monitor.
Do you find self-insured, there was?
Yeah, so based on self-insure, so what our budget would do is pay all the claims. So if we're budgeting twenty million dollars, we're gonna pay basically a self-insured administrator to manage all of that, the claims we'd be on a hook for.
So any of the monies we would send to Harvard or GIC or whatever?
GIC, yeah.
We would state in the account and then.
Correct, correct, but to do so, again, if you did transition from full to self, when I was in the town of Burnham, you'd have to get about three months of claims as a reserve, and you need to build that up going forward, so it would be a significant cost for us to do that upfront. But again, it's something we'll continue to monitor. Uh, Medicare, again, we have to pay one point four or five percent of the salary. So again, as we, as we mentioned before, colas, steps all increased, so we're more of seventy-four thousand. Capital, again, these are line items that have been put in the budget in the past few years, it makes sense, we have school, police, deep cavity, fire vehicles. It's great to have those in annually, again, we're anticipating a slight increase. To be honest, that's probably not enough for everything that we plan for, so we may have to scale back in terms of getting three school vehicles, we may have to look at two, it all depends on the cost and where they are, but again, inflation has significantly increased the cost of all our annual purchases. Liability insurance, again, the town has comprehensive insurance, covers all town buildings, schools. So we've had good news here, although the increase, there is an increase, it's not as much as it could be, and not as much for other towns. We were the recipient of the twenty twenty-four risk management award, which recognized commitment to safety and renewed compliance with U.S. Occupational Health and Safety Administration standards. So we do have various supporting trainings and workshops that give us a certain amount of credits during the year. Mike Rosen leads the efforts there, and it's, it's all over us from every department, we should maximize all of our possible credits. And again, the FinCom Reserve, we went through this before, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item in the budget, and it remains balanced, it does raise to free cash. Facilities, so not a lot of detail on this one, we do have it in the book, but again, operating expenses are increasing, higher costs for supplies and services, I mentioned. Fixing boilers, fixing air conditioning, that is all very expensive now. So again, this, this budget is another one that we've put on up significantly more than, than we did. The department does support and service all general government and school department facilities, so that's, that's kind of a, a risk account, I'd like to call it, because there's a lot of line items in there. But if something goes wrong, it's gonna be a very expensive fix. Oh, that's it? That is all I have. Any other questions on the general budget? Yes.
Going forward, how do you forecast capital expenses?
The ones in the budget?
Oh, go forward, you're not going to need three school rooms.
Yeah, so there's a capital operating, capital outlet committee at the council, chaired by Mr. Rosen.
General government and school.
Yeah, so general government, school facilities, so put together that part of your plan. It's out there, it's on the website, right?
Just as a point of clarity, I'm staff liaison to the capital outlet committee. It's actually comprised of representatives from the selectmen, school committee, finance commission, and members at large. I believe the chair at the moment is selectman Bob Donnelly. But yes, we have a plan that it's a fall cycle. We go to the fall town meeting with the, in this case, with the FY25 plan. So we start the work on that right after town meeting ends in May, we start in June on that. There's a five-year plan, so if you want to see what the projected plan is for FY25, look at FY24 as year two. That's how, a pre-sneak preview. Sneak preview.
Going forward for years, it's a lot of years.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Love is coming up.
Yeah, so School Department Superintendent and Sean Manning, Director of Finance Operations.
Hi, everybody. Tim Love, Superintendent of Schools. It's very nice to see you all today. Obviously, we have quite a portion of the budgets on this account. And I'm going to share a little bit of an overview, but I'm going to hand it over to Sean, Manny and our assistant superintendent of finance. I really had to talk to the details of it. The budget itself, and I'm going to go the right way, I hope that's right. Really comes down to a few different things. And it's been the culmination of a lot of hard work over the past, I want to say, seven, eight months. You know, Sean and I were here for hot minutes before we really started looking at the budget and going through all of cost centers with the managers of each cost center. Really talking about, A, you know, what do you need for level service? What do you need for those to provide services similar to what you're doing this year for next year? And then B, what are those improvements that you think you need, that you've been asking for, those things that you've wanted, those wishes that you have? And then finally, hey, what are those things you haven't used for a really long time? What are those things that we can reduce or possibly look at efficiencies over time? We took both the level service budget, right, the budget that we, in order to provide the same or similar services than we are this year. And we brought that budget forward with some improvement requests as well. Through a process with FinCom and our finance and our other town partners, we actually started out with an 8.1% increase to our budget over FY25. We've not landed there at the end. We reviewed a lot of different tier changes, service reductions. You'll see in this budget, a lot to do with the opening of your investment of the New Hope Middle School. In particular, this budget represents 6.6 additional positions over the FY25 budget. And there's not a direct line here, I will share with you, because we, in the process, looked at positions that we wanted to add, looked at positions that we could possibly reduce, and then we looked at the positions we needed to make sure that we supported the investment that you have made in Hope, like that's been part of our year. We also looked at a lot of different parts of my entry plan and findings from my entry plan. As I went through and I interviewed more than 150 to 200 folks, and got more than 550 or so survey results on my entry plan, as well as more than 7,000 ratings actually for certain thoughts in the entry plan. One of the primary things that I've heard from almost everyone was safety, 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 safety. Discipline issues in our schools, safety of our staff, the safety of our students, ensuring that protocols are in place to keep everyone safe. Special education was another big one that occurred. You, through your grace, we invested in a special ed audit that we're actually possibly completing now. We're going to have those results at the end of May, that audit is just about done. But there are a lot of questions there, so we shifted around special education positions, we create some safety positions, we created some behavioral intervention positions to really work with the kids and provide behavioral support to students. And so we added quite a few things. What you'll see at the end is a $65,292,117 budget, or 6.7% increase. This budget didn't come without some hardships and some looking at some other efficiencies and identifying things that are really good for Norwood and good for students, but maybe one as efficient as possible. So you'll see in this budget, a reduction of our Latin program at the high school, which is a wonderful and incredible program for many students, but not a significant number of students. You'll also see the reduction of some library services at the elementary level. We restructured our specialists at the elementary level. So we can move them up to the middle school, but also provide some really strategic services where we can reduce library services, but increase things like art, music and wellness. The primary piece, again, that you'll see here, actually, kind of go one more, is the opening of Hope. The 6.6 positions aren't the only thing that we're investing in Hope. There are 12.8 support staff that are moving up into Hope Middle School, either through the 6.6 that were added to the budget, or through transfers from the elementary. There are also 12 general ed positions, fifth grade teachers that are moving up to the, sorry, fifth grade, moving up from their elementary schools to the middle school. So a total of about 24.8 positions, 24. I'm not quite right there. Roughly 24 positions that are moving up to Hope. And Sean will have that detail on the slides to support the opening of the school. Again, at one point in time, it was looking primarily at somewhere of 30, 35 was kind of the top, like 17 new positions that we would have needed. We're landing at 6.6 new positions total in this budget, too. What we hope to provide is a really great baseline to support students.
What is that for class size at?
I'm sorry?
What is that for class size at for administrators?
So there's 290 students, we have about 20 to 25 students per class. So the idea is that we want to support the opening of Hope, provide improvements throughout the district, but also look at efficiencies. And again, we're going to continue to do this work as time goes on. We have a lot of work to do in terms of, you know, financial questions next year. So we'll continue to do that work and hope that we can not have such a high increase. And I do look at the 6.7%, and I say, this is pretty high. This is not something that I wanted to ask the taxpayers for my first year here, but it's also with the opening of the new school. So with that, I'm going to hand it over, Sean. But I just want you to know that we did a lot of work on this, and we'll continue to do so to go through, and I really appreciate your support.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Sean Manning, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. So you'll see a few slides that just kind of reinforce the, reinforce the details that this superintendent just provided. This is sort of a top-level look at our budget and also sort of how we've gotten to where we've landed. So you can see at the top, our final FY25 budget is 578.7 FTEs. This is the operating budget, this doesn't include positions that are paid by grants or revolving funds. We do have about 33 positions that are paid through revolving funds, like school lunch and grants as well, or some grants that pay for positions. And our preliminary budget, as the superintendent Love mentioned, for FY26 is 582.3 FTEs, $66 million, $66.2 million, it was an increase of 8.1%. It was an increase at that time of 11.6 FTEs, and those were all for the middle school. Then you can see below that, we worked through with BBC and FinCom, and eventually we landed at a budget that's a 66.7% increase. The final budget is $65,292,117, 577.3 FTEs. It's an increase of 6.6 FTEs. There are some, we just made a footnote, there are some benefit costs associated. We recognize every time that there's an increase in FTEs, there is a benefit cost on the town side because the shared costs are the health insurance, you have Medicare. So there is about $150,000 that would be need to be added for those health. The next couple of slides go through the positions in a little bit more detail. So you can see at the top, there's new positions that are added for the middle school, for opening a new middle school, especially with grade five added. So you can see there's one special education teacher, assistant principal, an art teacher, music teacher, a school counselor, an English language learning teacher, and 0.6 of an administrative assistants. So those total the increase in the school budget of 6.6 FTEs. And then, as the superintendent mentioned, you can see below, there's a number of positions that are allocated to the middle school through transfers from other places in the budget. So you can see there's a 0.2 music teacher, transferred from an elementary position. There's one world language added at the middle school that is transferred from the reduction of the high school Latin position. There's a wellness position transferred from elementary up to the middle school. There are four special education teachers all transferred from the elementary. And you can see total transfer of 6.2 FTEs, but the increase in the budget is zero because these FTEs are just transferring from other places to the middle school.
Your four special education teachers, are those for pullout resources for kids? And then the inclusion teacher will be actually teaching content? Is that how that works?
There are, these special teachers, this is three inclusion teachers and one program teacher. There are also a special education inclusion teacher in the budget up top. So I think it's four, I want to say three, I want to say three inclusion transfers plus one program teacher, and then an additional inclusion teacher up. So they're all teaching content, so I think it's important to know that, depending on the program teacher. So some will teach in the general content area, classes supporting reading, writing. Some will, even in a specialized program, will still support the academic content at high levels.
Correct.
Great. And then the last slide, you can see, as we mentioned, grade five classroom teachers. 12 classroom teachers will move up from the various elementary schools to the middle school. Again, there's no increase in the budget for those, they just move in from schools to the middle school. And on this slide, you can see some other staffing changes that aren't related to the middle school. So you can see, we're increasing one teacher at the high school for the freshman academy. This has been an initiative that's been going on along for quite a few years, that we're finally adding a position that supports the ninth grade, ninth grade class coming up into the high school. And then for safety and security, you can see we're adding two behavior interventionist teachers. That's been a goal of the district for quite some time. And one director of safety, compliance and communications. We are also reducing, we're moving to BCBA occupational therapists. These are special education-related services positions to what we call mass health medicaid funding. So we're hoping to increase the revenue that we get from Medicaid, federal Medicaid funding by claiming for more services. And we have a warrant article that also works, is requested in this regard. The warrant will give us a one-year lead time so that we can work with these staff to do more claiming and increase this revenue source that will eventually pay for three positions. But two of the positions that people pay for will be coming out of our operating budget. So these aren't really a reduction in overall positions for the school, but they are coming off the budget, going to another funding source. And then you can see there's a reduction of two library positions. So overall, here, we're adding four positions, but we're reducing four positions, so the net change to the budget is zero.
Sorry, just a quick question again, Aldees. What is the criteria for behavior interventionist, as it definitely does not meet the continuing qualifications as a BCBA?
Yeah, we're expecting master level behavioral support degrees, something along the lines of a BCBA, and actually, I think the one that we just hired. Going to the BCBA, for example, are most complete schools. So it's typically some kind of a master level program. It could be a social worker, it could be an investment counselor. But the idea is that they're working with general education population, rather than moving their BCAs or working with a specialist.
Okay, thank you.
That was it on the staffing FTE increases. So this is just one slide, it's a little bit of what they did on the town side. It shows sort of the, how the staffing increases work, sort of the basis of our base salary increases. So when we look at teachers, which is our largest group of employees, you can see, similar to on the town side, what the cost drivers are on the salary increases just based on the collective bargaining agreements that we have in place. Teachers who receive a step increase, that's typically 4.5% for a teacher getting that anniversary step increase. And here in Norwood, about 56% of the employees, the teachers that we have, are already on that maximum step. So they don't, they don't receive that 4.5% step anymore. There are 56% of the teachers, but that's 63% of the salaries, because those are your highest paid teachers. So 63% of the salaries for teachers don't receive that step increase. Teachers can also get blame and column transfers when they get a master's degree or bachelor's degree. They move up in salary based on those changes in degree. We budgeted about $230,000 for that. And then, of course, there's a cost of living increase for the teacher's contract itself, and that's 3.25% for next year, and that's for all teachers, even those that are at the maximum and don't receive the step increase anymore. Other increases include longevity, stipends, reimbursements and things like that. This is just an overview of what brought us from our original budget down to the final budget that we landed at. So we had a number of reductions that were called our tier one reductions that we went through with the Budget Balancing Committee. We reduced our technology by $37,000. We transferred positions instead of adding positions of equal to five. We took some money out of our curriculum, we're still budgeting money for curriculum, but we lowered our increase there by $100,000. We looked at some of our textbooks, instructional materials, professional development, and we lowered some of those costs by about $80,000. We took on a little bit more risk in our higher down savings. So when we have a teacher who's retiring at the top salary, and we know we're going to replace that person with somebody coming in very on the low end of the salary range, we can assume some savings in our budget. So we were able to bring our budget down by $255,000 there. And then lastly, we looked at all the requests from the principals and the department heads that we had, and we reduced some of their requests down. A lot of these reductions aren't necessarily reductions from the budget, but they're reductions from what we originally had in our request that brought us down by $883,000 to the final increase of 6.7%. This is a little busy, but it's just another way of looking at our budget. So when you look at the top, the base salary increases, when we look at all of our staff, just moving who we have now forward, including all the steps and the Colas and all the collective bargaining agreements, that costs $2.3 million, or 3.8% of our total increase. So if we have an increase for next year of 6.7%, 3.8% we would need immediately off the bat just to cover our contractual salary increases. And salaries for the school districts are typically 80 to 82%. It's about 82% of the costs in the school budget are salaries. And next, transportation is a very large cost driver for next year for the school district. We have almost two or three different types of transportation. One, we have our yellow buses, that service we contract out, and we have a new contract that's starting next year. So we had to go out to bid. That we've bid, budgeted about a 20% increase. With inflation these days, typically you see a large increase in that first year of a contract bid. And then in the following years, two and three, you see more modest increases. Additionally, we're adding between two and three buses next year for the new middle school. Because the middle school's all the way on one side of town, and we have to now transport grade five to the middle school instead of to various elementary schools, we need to add between two and three new yellow buses. And the last thing about the transportation is we do it in-house, which is an amazing service for special education transportation. It saves the town a lot of money and it's very efficient. But we're finding that we're having a very, a lot of difficulty recruiting drivers. So we really need to aggressively increase our costs for the drivers and the bus monitors. So to all told, 1.5% of the 6.7% increase is for transportation. And often that will happen every two, three, four years, transportation will be a big increase, and then it should be more modest increases in the next couple of years. We originally had an increase of 11.6 FTEs for the new middle school. There are other increases, things like tuition, supplies, equipment, that's equal 1.2%. And then at the end, we reduced out the reductions we made, and that's how we ended up at our final. We are proposing warrant articles, I know these are going to be discussed on another night, I don't know when we need to. Thursday night, so we can go through those then. This slide highlights some of the larger federal grants that we do get. We do receive about, I think it's about $8 million in state and federal funding. Some of the larger federal funds, we receive Title I, it pays for some teachers. We receive, these are the large entitlement grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, explains what they're for. And then the IDEA, which is the largest, it's a special education grant from the federal government. These are all set by Congress. These grants are all statute, statute federal grants that we receive. And right now, we know that they're still going to be budgeted for next fiscal year, so we're confident in these. They do pay, as I mentioned, for about 27 FTEs out of the grants, and there's about six FTEs paid out of the. And there's about six FTEs paid out of the revolving funds.
Uh, with changes with the Department of Education at federal level, do we expect any impacts? For the budget?
Always unclear, and I can't, we can't guarantee anything. Uh, what I will share with you though, is that the Department of Education, um, if it goes anywhere in Health Human Services, they still have to facilitate the grants to the states. Based on the congressional approval of those grants. So those grants should not change. Um, now the Congress would have to have more, you know, significant number, um, of voters to change the, the funds. Anything can happen, but right now the way this we don't anticipate changes.
This slide shows how we report to the states. So every year, the school district has to report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, how our spending shows for the year. And these are the categories that we show. So it's just a, another way of looking at the school budget. So you can see at the top, it's district-wide leadership and, and administration. There's an increase of one FTE, that's for the director of safety. So that's an increase of ten percent on that line. The two thousand area instructional services, that's everything that has to do with the classroom. From a teacher to a supply to the principals, that's obviously the largest part of the school budget. It's almost fifty million dollars. We're increasing five point six FTEs there. We're increase of two point nine million dollars, six point one percent. The other school services, the three thousands, that includes things like athletics. That includes the transportation, that includes, um, fine arts. Um, it's an increase there mostly due to the transportation as we described. We're increasing the buses, we have a new contract, we're increasing our salaries for the drivers and the monitors. That's a large increase next year, it's a seventeen percent increase on that particular line. Operations and maintenance of plan, that includes our technology staff. That's what the seven FTEs are there. So that includes our, our technology department. And that's an increase of twenty-eight thousand. We do have a very small line, which we're reducing down to five thousand dollars for benefits and fixed charges. At this point in time, most of those types of charges are on the town budget. And we're, we were able to reduce this down to five thousand because we're now using the town compensated absences account. So we really only need to budget a very small amount on that. Community services pays for some behavior surveys. It also pays for some mental health things, small budget line item. And then lastly is the nine thousand, that, that's all our tuitions that we have to pay when we send students out of district. This line item is offset by a very large, what we call state circuit breaker reimbursement. So we actually budget about eleven point nine million dollars in tuition. It can typically be a very volatile area and a very, it's our largest non-salary expense area. But when we factor in the circuit breaker that we received from the state, which is about four point five million dollars, we only need to budget six million dollars. Next year, we're very fortunate that this line is only going up by seventy thousand dollars. So typically this can be, like I said, a very volatile area when the, when the out of district tuitioned schools, um, increase their rates, which we saw a couple of years ago. Again, it's, it shows our bottom line increase, six point six FTEs and six point seven percent. And the rest of the slides, just go through more detail on each of those specific areas. But I can answer, you can answer questions if you have them. I don't think we have to go through all the rest of the slide.
Tom Clintark, so I'm, I'm brand new with this. At what point do we compare actuals to actuals? Because your actual, your budget for twenty-six versus actual for twenty-four is almost a twenty percent increase. That's huge. Versus when do we compare, when do we get numbers to twenty-five so we know what we actually spent? Do we know what the budget for twenty-six is compared to the actuals for twenty-five?
Uh, so right now, the budget for twenty-five is sixty-one point two million dollars. We do quarterly reports. So on this Wednesday, we'll have our third quarter report. Our quarterly reports this year have showed, originally we're at about a surplus of nine hundred thousand and then that dropped down to seven hundred and now we're at eight hundred thousand. So we're pretty consistent that we're going to end under that budget of sixty-one point two million dollars by about eight hundred thousand. One thing I should mention, our budget needs to tap, we have a special education stabilization fund. And in order to make the sixty-one point two million dollars, we needed to use five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the SPED stabilization. We also need to use five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty-six from our SPED stabilization in order to make the sixty-five point three million dollars. But if, if it comes out like we've been projecting and we have eight hundred thousand dollars surplus at the end of the year, the first thing that we'll do is not use the stabilization. And we'll keep that whole, because we want that to be a true reserve. And then lastly, what schools are allowed, we're allowed to carry forward circuit breaker funds for up to a year. So typically whatever is left at the end of the year, we'll keep that into the circuit breaker account and in the following year, sort of as another reserve.
I have a question, just curiosity. I noticed like that, um, where Staples and Oklahoma State are and even at the Scotty Shop, when people lot, in the mornings, you'll see a school bus at the different lots. Like you'll see moms pull up in their vehicles and they're loading kids. Does that have anything to do with our town?
The private schools can. The private, private schools, that could be.
It could be private schools, yeah. Some private schools offer their own transportation, they could hire their own yellow bus. The only, the only, so I should, uh.
Next question after that, yeah. There's a question online.
What are we going to, next year, we should have six, I think we're going to have about sixteen yellow school buses in the next contract. Maybe we're increasing it up to eighteen. One bus that we provide goes to St. Catherine's. So a lot of districts do provide transportation to a private school. If it's in the town and we do that with one of our yellow buses that we pay for, but it goes, the transportation goes from all over the town to St. Catherine's. The rest of the buses all go directly to the middle school.
What is the cost per pupil for the school district?
Twenty thousand. They just published, the DES, they just published the final FY twenty-four. So if you take the budget of sixty-five point three million divided by thirty-six hundred students. Yeah, approximately thirty-six hundred students.
I'll, I'll find that, I'll find that.
Sean, we have a question online. Uh, Doris?
Hi, I'm, I'm curious. Um, the after-school care program has teachers. Um, are these teachers, do they fall under the school, um, salaries for their health and salaries? Or do they fall under the recreation department?
Thanks, now those would be under the recreation department because this fiscal year, the extended day program moved from the school department to, uh, RAC. So, um, many of those, it's probably, again, it's like the snow removal, it's probably overtime or additional costs. A lot of those employees may work in the school during the day, but the cost for the extended day portion of it is paid out of that.
The extended day revolving funds, not, not, not tax dollars, it's a revolving fund.
So it's a revolving fund like school lunch, where the revenue that pays, the tuition that's paid for extended day pays for those costs.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this, this goes back a while. What's, what's the motivation of the shared expenses? Where we're taking, uh, different departments, we're taking expenses and putting it into the town's shared accounts versus showing that on physical facilities?
So this is typical of how the, how most municipalities work. Um, there's always some portion of shared costs. Now, when we report to the Department of Ed, we do report on every dollar spent on the school district. So it wouldn't be just the sixty-five point three million of our budget. It would be all the grants and revolvings, which involves about twelve million dollars. When you add all of those revolving funds and grants and the circuit breaker. And then it would be also all the shared costs. Right, so that would be sort of like the total all-in. And we report on that every year and that's publicly available. Um, we hope to have maybe a page of that in our eventual budget book for the school sticker. It will show something we call an all-funds summary that shows everything, not just the operating.
So as a town meeting member, if you want to make a vote, when you look at the numbers, you're like, we're clear on all the expenses. Like, so how do you, how do you make a town meeting member feel better about voting?
I mean, we can highlight that, I bet. As far as our operating budget, that's, that is covering the five hundred and seventy-seven FTEs. I think we just have to make sure everybody understands, there's grants, there's revolvings, and there's also shared costs.
Look, look, the question about how much, how much per student? You know, is it, I mean, it's around twenty, you know, and, but, uh, it's really more than that because you can't take the shared.
That is a good point, yeah. There's a, there's a per pupil out of the operating budget, then there's an overall per pupil cost.
I was curious, so you said there's about thirty-six hundred kids in the whole school system? Can you guide on that?
Three thousand five seventy-five.
Sorry?
Three thousand five hundred and seventy-five.
Like, what percentage is, uh, of your calls?
Well, there's different versions of that. So the special education, and that's twenty-four, about twenty-four percent. Um, high needs is about fifty point eight three percent right now. And high, high needs, oh, again, my, my. High needs is about fifty-eight percent or so of our student population, or about two thousand ninety-three kids. And that's a combination of students who are, have disabilities. Those are the students of special education you were referring to. Students who are ELL, English learning needs. Students who have partial language that's not English. Or students that have economically disadvantaged or, or low income. So there's a significant shift in the, obviously the town, um, with some significant needs in the schools. But that also led the state, um, and the governor's budget to allocate about one point one million additional money in chapter seventy funds for this FY, FY twenty-six as well. Um, or additional six point eight percent of increase what we had in the year prior. So the state's recognizing it, though, I guess. Um, but the special ed rate is about twenty-four percent.
So that's close to sixty percent of the students?
Not the special ed rate, special ed is twenty-four, about twenty-four percent of the three thousand five hundred and seventy-five students. I can actually grab that number for you. There are, yes, there are, thank you for that. Um, the, the fifty point, fifty-eight percent of high needs is, is a combination of all of them together. So that's not, that's not, this, altogether, two thousand eight, two thousand eight hundred and eighty students are considered high need, whether that be EL or special ed. But some of those students could also be.
Has it stayed reimbursed, uh, for the high school? Has it reimbursed for migrants? Are they, are they up to date? Do they have any lagging at all in their payments?
Um, for the shelter, there's students that we get, there's quite a few different reimbursements. So we have been receiving one hundred and, roughly one hundred and five dollars a day for students that are at the shelter. Um, they have reversed, reimbursed us up through December. Um, and I, I, have you heard it? They're going to extend.
They're going to extend it.
They're going to extend that. So that, and I believe that the last shelter here in Norwood is going to be maybe wound down in December of twenty-five. So we do anticipate to continue to get a reimbursement there. We also get reimbursed for school origin transportation. So that's for homeless transportation. It might not just be at the shelter, it might be, um, if a student went to Norwood schools and they become homeless, they may be living in another town, but we still have to transport them there here and to, we share that with another district and vice versa. Sometimes a student could be homeless, living in Norwood, but we need to help share the costs to transfer them to another town. There's a lot of that transportation which we get reimbursed for as well. They're up to date, yeah. Some of that is lagged, the transportation, the homeless transportation, we have to report in that report that I was mentioning at the end of the fiscal year. And then they reimburse us for the prior year, but they're up to date.
Yeah, what about the high school? There's the reimbursements.
You mean the MSDA or like the building authority? Those are done on a cost reimbursement.
Yes.
Basis, so as we pay the contractor for the construction, we get reimbursed by the, by the MSDA.
Which up at the middle school?
Oh, sorry, middle school.
Well, both, technically both.
Yes, well. High school doesn't have any more MSDA.
No, that's all.
No, the middle school, sorry, the middle school is getting reimbursed as the construction is happening.
Um, just to clarify, multi-language learners are not specifically the migrant families that have been relocated to Norwood for shelter. They also include residents of Norwood that live here, pay taxes here and whose children are entitled to an equal education.
One, one hundred percent, one hundred percent. Just because you're a migrant student does not make you a special ed student, does not make you an ELE student. You have many migrant students that speak perfectly good English and they're not special ed. Right, so you're getting funds for those students that are here. But many of our students that are high needs are students that are visiting Norwood as residents.
So on the nine thousand, the programs with, uh, other school districts. The increase is one point two percent. So sixty-nine thousand, that's the number for next year's. Is that included, less the, the four, uh, four million from the state that's already being counted?
Exactly.
But it's not shown there?
Exactly, so that line item, which is the, that's when we pay out of district school. So if the student can't be educated in Norwood, we, we can send them to a private school. Sometimes it's another, it's a collaborative school. Sometimes it's another school district that can offer those services. That line item, we actually paid for next year's budget. It's, we're going to be paying eleven point ninety million dollars. It's a very large expense for a key school district. But we get that credit back from the state. It's called the circuit breaker reimbursement. And it reimburses of districts for high pos special education placements. A lot of that is out of district tuition, but also sometimes when we have a student that we're spending a lot of money on in district, we can get some reimbursement for that as well. And that reimbursement of roughly four point five million dollars brings the eleven point nine million dollars down to a budget of six million. And as I said, an increase of seventy, seventy thousand, we're very fortunate next year that, that, that we have such a small increase because the budget this year in FY twenty-five is, is actually more than we were showing a surplus. It's part of that surplus we're projecting. And that's allowing us not to have to increase this line very heavily going into twenty-six. This line item for tuitions often tends to be a large increase for school districts. It's very volatile because even in the last couple of months, we've had maybe three or four new placements. Students can move in at any time in the year. And those can be between two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars if it's a residential school placement they want to do. So it can be very volatile. So really, this is a good, good luck story for next year's budget, that we don't need to increase it by, by much more than that.
Twenty-two thousand, whatever, about twenty-two thousand.
The per pupil is twenty-two thousand.
I guess, is that it, our first slides?
Thank you all very much, appreciate you.
Thanks. Let me just save a few more slides.
That's it.
Yep, I'm sorry to do an, uh, is there an advertisement for next?
Um, no.
Okay, all right. So, um, thanks everybody for coming tonight. That's the end of tonight's presentation. Just to advertise, um, Wednesday night's, um, presentation is going to be Town Meeting 101. Uh, for, especially for any new Town Meeting members that might be here, you might want to come and learn uh, the etiquette of Town Meeting and how it works. And we'll also have Land Use 101 as well. Um, talk about the five to six, um, land use articles that we have on the warrant. And we're also going to cover all of the special Town Meeting number two's articles that show. I believe there are a ton of them. Uh, just, there are two, two special Town Meetings ahead of our annual Town Meeting this year. And, uh, and then just looking forward to Thursday, May first. Uh, we'll be wrapping up our last information session with, uh, special Town Meeting number one articles and talking about the community preservation act articles, so, and the projects. Um, other than that, I'd want to say thank you all, the department staff that came out to, um, support. And thank you all, Town Meeting members that are here and everybody else watching at home. Thank you very much, and I'll see you soon. Have a good night, everybody, bye-bye. Thank you.